He looks just like you.
Go ahead, Pat. Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'll apologize for the delay. We were having some technical issues, but hopefully everything's up and running. If you're watching via Facebook Live and we have no audio, please text my police chief and let him know. We're gonna assume that we have full audio and we're up and running. So, call the meeting to order. The first thing I'm gonna do is open up for public forum. If there's anybody here wishing to address the council that's not on the agenda, now is the time. So that would be you, Herschel. Please give us your name, who you're with, and why you're here this evening.
My name is Herschel West. I'm with Waste Connections. And I'm here because I understand that the existing agreement for trash services is soon to expire. And Waste Connections is very interested in giving you a proposal for that service if you guys do decide to go out for bid. Just want you to know that we are very interested. We used to service the city of Halsted. I think we probably started in the early 90s and we end up losing it, I think, end of 2016. We still service about 56 municipalities out of the Wichita and Hutch area and 76 municipalities in the state of Kansas. So we think we can do a good job. I don't think we lost you due to service. I think it was pricing. So, from what I've been told, we will be able to give you very competitive pricing when it does expire and if you decide to go out for bid. If you're interested.
Okay, council. Anybody have any questions for Herschel this evening? Well, Herschel, we appreciate you coming in and when that contract's up, we'll give it some consideration.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there anybody else here wishing to address the council under public forum? If not, I'll go ahead and close public forum and I'm gonna ask if there's any agenda changes.
Mr. Mayor, under new business, we would like to add item number six, which is a discussion of repairs to the softball lights.
Alrighty. We'll take more work even with a late start. Well, I would like to ask for the approval of the consent agenda next.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the consent agenda submitted, I would make a motion to approve it.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Consent agenda stands as approved. We have no unfinished business, so we're gonna move on into new business. And the first item under new business is the city council vacancy that we have because our beloved Brody Flavin decided to resign and he will be greatly missed, but I understand he's got a lot going on right now. I do have a nominee this evening to bring forward to the council and Ethan, would you like to weigh in or would you like me to give the introduction in great fanfare?
I'll give, sir.
So I was approached by several people. There was a lot of good candidates to consider and my candidate this evening that I'd like to bring forward, you might recognize him. Go ahead and step up here, Jim. Jim Van Scoyke, former fire chief of Halsted. So, council, if you'd like to ask Jim any questions, that's fine. Or if you don't have any questions, I would entertain a motion to accept him.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to-
Oh, sorry. I thought you were asking a question. Do I have a chance to ask a question or did you already motion? Sorry. I guess I just, um, what brings, like, what kind of, I know you were the fire EMS, right? For how many years?
Uh, forty.
Forty years? That's a long time. You just missed us that much and wanted to-
Yeah.
What, I guess, sparked your interest to come join the council?
I, uh, I thought about it after I retired and retired's a loose word in my world. But I, uh, I have a vested interest in this city. I love the city and I wanna keep seeing it progressing as we go along. I think I can help. I worked for a city as well as a county fire district for 10 years, so I know the maintenance part and I know the ins and outs and the budget part extremely well. So, I think I could bring a lot to the table. I have familiarity with the, with most folks in town. I know the projects that are going on. I still keep pretty much in tune on that. I don't go by the fire station much, but every once in a while I will. And we'll have a question here and there, but besides from that.
Thank you.
Like the city.
Thank you.
You have any other questions? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move and make an appointment of Mr. Van Scoyke for the vacant city council seat.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Jim Van Scoyke to the vacant council seat. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Jim, have a seat.
Not quite.
Not quite.
Oh, yeah. Julie's got her job to do.
I knew that was coming.
I can't be nervous with you, Richard. Okay, you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, James Van Scoyke.
I, James Van Scoyke.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support-
That I will support-
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Kansas.
The Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties-
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Halsted City Council.
The Halsted City Council.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay.
Julie, I have another one of these.
Okay.
I'll give it to him.
That'd be great.
Jim, I've, uh, I've worked with you for a number of years in your other capacity and I'm very excited to have you as part of this body and looking forward to working with you in a different capacity.
Thank you.
I think it'll be, it'll be good.
I wanna say this is very unusual on this side.
It feels a little different, don't it?
Yes, it does.
Enter in the executive session reading seat, too. You're welcome.
Next under new business is, I believe we're gonna have a discussion about the police K-9 program. Ethan, you're heading that discussion up. Looks like Josh is passing the buck from the corner over there.
Just kind of as we have discussed when we were talking disposition of vehicles, with the, the current makeup of the department as we're hiring staff, it just, the, the realities of keeping the K-9 program as a, as a good thing for us to continue just isn't, isn't there. We just, you know, it's, it's tough to recruit existing K-9 handlers that don't already either have their own K-9, you know, that they're looking to travel with, or it's gonna present, you know, significant training on the upside and we haven't had a lot of even certified officers, so we don't know if we're gonna have to send someone to academy. So this obviously was something, you know, when it started, there was community support. I mean, we ran the program for four years, but at this point, we just, from a staff perspective, feel, you know, continuation of that program is, is probably not feasible or a good investment of the city's resources. So that obviously brings up what happens with Eddie. And I believe Josh can speak to that. We found, you know, someone that used to be a K-9 handler that would be very interested in, in taking Eddie.
Would, uh, would he continue in his duties or would he retire?
So initially, due to the additional training that will be required to get recertified, get familiar, he would not go directly into police work, but that would be a process they would start. And I'm comfortable saying that it would be just down the road. It's Chief Brian out of Bentley PD who's had four dogs in the past in his Kansas Highway Patrol days, so he's got a lot of experience in training, getting the dog where he needs to be. And then, after certification, the benefit to this that I like is the ability that they're only eight miles away and we can call them when we need them. So as long as they're available, he's agreed to come and allow us still to use the dog in the city, so.
I definitely understand the problem of being able to hire another officer that can act as a K-9 handler and it's, it's been an issue looking for somebody. At the same time, I've always been a big proponent of Eddie, so I'd like to see him continue on with his career and if he can go to a neighboring community that he can still benefit this community, I think that's probably a good direction to go.
Lots of ties still to the community, so.
I'll give the rest of the council a chance to weigh in with their thoughts if anybody has any.
For the circumstances, I think that sounds pretty reasonable.
Do you need any action from the council to take care of this or can you take care of this under your authority, Ethan?
Um, Brad, what would be the best way?
I think, just directing staff to go ahead and facilitate the transfer.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to direct staff to make necessary arrangements for the transfer of our K-9.
Second. We have a motion and a second for staff to facilitate the transfer of our K-9. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Alrighty. Next on the agenda is pasture lease renewal on some ground that the city recently acquired. You, would you like to intro that?
Sure. We, you know, purchased the 69 acres there southwest, the Tebow property. Last year, there was a current lease on it that runs through June 1st of 2024. That was with Weber Farms. Jacob and Ryan Weber have reached out and inquired about continuing the pasture lease agreement and indicated in kind of their initial outreach that they would be amenable up for a term of 10 years. You know, we kinda had to make a quick decision last time since we were closing on the property of whether to continue. Was the decision of the council to honor the lease through June 1st, 2024. That being said, it's city property, so it did not know if the council wanted us to enter into direct negotiation, if this is something you wanna see RFP'd. So it's really how do you want to handle this going forward, so.
My, my feeling is this. I'm personally okay with extending the lease to the current people that are leasing it. I don't wanna lock it down to a 10-year agreement. I think we should have some language in there where if the city would happen to need that ground, we could, we could back out of that lease.
With plenty of advance notice.
There'd be plenty of advance notice. I mean, obviously, the only time that we would need to is if the demand for housing grew at such a pace that the 30 lots we have available now are full and we needed somewhere to go. And that could be three years from now or 30 years from now. Nobody knows when that's gonna happen. But I would just, I would be willing to extend that lease as long as we have the ability to, to at least corner off part of that ground for future development, should we get to the point where we need it. Other than that, I don't have an issue. And any other questions, council?
I agree with what I was gonna say. I agree with that.
I conversed with my cousins this morning about this particular issue. And I discussed that with Brad a little bit. But that's the business they're in, in a different county, Wilson, Woodson County. And they typically, uh, they lease theirs for six months at a time for yearlings and they'll do a yearly lease for cows, pairs. So, yeah, I, I agree with you. I think, uh, we need to leave the door, we need to be able to open the door when the time comes.
I would, I would think we could put together something like a, uh, a five-year lease with one-year options or something like that, so the city at that annual renewal can say whether we need the ground or not. I mean, obviously, you guys are gonna know if we need the ground. You're gonna see things start heading that way. But other than that, I'm okay, just as long as we have the ability to, to at least utilize part of that tract if we need to for future development.
I would think we would need to authorize the city attorney to enter into the contract language negotiations for that.
Something you can do easy enough, Brad?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that language I use in a lot of them in other cities, so that's fine.
You need direction and then bring back a contract to us or do you need hard action on this?
No, I think that's sufficient as far as direction to us.
Is the price relevant? I don't know anything about.
Um, we just put in there the, the average price is $23.50, just in fairness. If the council wanted us to do, you know, some sort of RFP on it, we didn't disclose their price, just in fairness to them.
I've been looking at lease prices for other reasons on, on tillable ground and that price on pasture ground, I think is probably pretty fair.
Let's see. What was offered from the data we have would be, would have been considered a competitive offer, so.
So, I'm good with that, council. You good with that?
Sure.
We'll just have Brad proceed. And I know our, our leases are in the audience, so it looks like we're gonna continue to do business with you. Anything else on that one, council? Alright, let's move on to more exciting stuff. Industrial Park Speculative Building Project. You have something you wanna talk about on that tonight, Ethan?
Yes, uh, as we've, if you've been out there, hopefully you've seen the, the site layout, the pad layout. You know, when we approached it, just kind of a spec building, you could see kind of just the general layout and the purpose of a spec building. Meeting with the contractors, just talked kind of options when we figured out where exactly we were laying the building out on the site. The one change order that did come up is change order number two, which is additional concrete approach. And that's because they cited and, and kind of worked their original cost off of the existing line of all the buildings out there. All the buildings out there either preexist or have a variance for how close they are. So for us to be compliant, we were about 10 feet farther back with the zoning. Obviously, we can, I guess, enter into a variance process to try and do that, but that would be change order two is just additional concrete.
Footings are poured, so we're not moving it now.
Um, but yeah, it's our zoning code. We wanted to comply with our own zoning code as far as the setback on that building. Then, as we just, you know, discussed, these guys build these things. What, what makes this building marketable? You know, one, the council already decided to, to increase the square footage from a 3,200 to a 3,600. But basically, it had two, two garage, two commercial doors on the front, nothing in the back. We talked about the possibility of adding, and that's the most significant change order, would be adding a door on the west or the rear of the building, so it actually has a pull-through capability. And then the other two change orders was basically to do a concrete approach off that back garage door and then rock kind of around. So, um, it, the building would be facing east, so on the west and then the north side, there would basically be pull-around, kind of a finished-out parking lot for that. Again, the city's hoping to either market this, you know, for direct sale or lease. This, talking to Beth, you know, these, these would be good things to make the building even more marketable. I mean, it's gonna be marketable as is, so we don't have to do it. But altogether, all four change orders are just, uh, I don't think I totaled them up. It's like 20. Sorry. Get my calculator here. 20.
I guess my question, I don't know if it was, can I ask a question now while he's thinking about?
Sure.
We, like, we approved the plans before, but then they say, oh, we realize that it needs to be set back further. Or like, I don't understand why that doesn't-
Originally-
Get caught earlier, I guess, and it's our land plots and we approved the plans and then, so I'm confused.
We didn't have set in stone measurements on those lots. We knew what our setback was and we didn't know for sure how we were gonna orientate that building. If you remember-
I don't think I was part of this, if I'm gonna be honest.
Yeah, you may not have been. We, we put that original proposal together pretty quick so we could go out for the grant process, 'cause we received a grant for this building for, it's a cost share that could, should cover close to 50%. So we put that together pretty quick to apply for that grant and then got the grant and nobody's really looked at it until we went out and started laying the building out with the contractor. We've had a chance to have some conversations with Beth, with EDC, about what are people looking for in buildings. That's where these changes are coming from.
And by we, you mean?
Me and Ethan.
When this first went out to bid, we put out a request for bids from several, what, nine different contractors?
And two replied?
And only two gave bids and they, I think, were $700,000 or close to $800,000.
Yeah.
And we said no. And so we, we had it rebid to two people. Martin Machine, I believe it was, and the group out of-
Prairie Building.
Prairie Builders.
Prairie Builders. They came in under $300,000.
Which was, our, our original idea for this project was around that 250 mark.
I, yeah, I just know how, I mean, not here, but we have built a house before and I understand how changes happen and if we're not, like, reading the plans prior to, like, then you get, oh, here's $6,000 and, oh, $3,000. Or, so I guess I would hope that we have, like, I don't know. I haven't seen the plan and I'm a pretty visual person, so I guess for me, like, I feel like it would be beneficial for me to kind of see things, but-
The plan. Or the layout was on page.
And I'm not trying to be a stickler. I'm just like-
Twenty-seven in the packet.
Sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
That's what we're here for, is to answer questions, but, uh, based on what we've talked to EDC about and making this building marketable, and that's our goal, is to get a tenant in there, I think the changes that we're seeking are pretty reasonable, so. And again, we're getting 50% of this building paid for by the federal government, right?
At a state, but it's-
State base grant that we got for.
Yeah, base grant. It just shot $19,000.
Okay, sorry, I'm not an architect. This is, literally looks like a rectangle, so.
That's, that's what it is. I mean, it's-
It is a rectangle.
Well, I'm sorry, there's no words on it. There's nothing and I'm just, I mean, it's fine. I just, I don't, if it's residential, no one out there has rocks going around for a pull-through.
It's, it's an industrial building and so that's, like, speculative is essentially, it's, it's just going to be a shell and then they finish it out. It's basically an open, open building that a business can move into at any point. The more you finish them out, the more you take the chance of you're doing things that a business would not find amenable. So we set basic standards of, we wanted 16-foot tie walls. We wanted at least two doors. We wanted a office space. But other than that, that became like, we did not have, as we even approached Prairie Building System, we just still didn't know where exactly on the lot we'd want this building. When we went out there, we're putting the building more on the north and then as far as we could go, as big as that lot is, you could almost build this exact same building and orient it a different way. So, say if a company does move its current location, rather than taking up the whole center of the lot, we were like, oh, this would allow for future expansion if somebody actually would buy it. So that's why the plans seem very generic as they're designed to be, because it's, it's very much speculative and then meant to kind of be an empty shell because it's an industrial-use building, not-
We're gonna sell it, not rent it.
Well, somebody wants to lease it from us.
We're just trying to attract-
Endure a lease. At least get somebody to come into town, industrial. I would agree that maybe that, uh, the, the approach is probably the only really necessary. A lot of those other items are typical tenant improvement items. Somebody will come into a, a structure and they want something that's gonna meet their needs and they'll come to the owner of the building and say, hey, we'd like to do this and we bless it and they do it out of their own pocket. So I think that concrete approach is probably about-
And the door on the backside.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the door on the backside is a big deal.
Right, right, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? So... So you're taking something off, George?
No, so, uh, what are we looking collectively? I'm good with just that concrete. You're thinking the overhead door and the concrete?
I think the overhead door on the back is-
That's at 7645?
Yeah.
I think that'd give a lot more options.
And it's a lot harder to do once, you know, it's a lot harder. Yeah. So, I don't know.
That would bring that dollar number to $13,668.
Or one and two?
Yes, sir.
What was three? I don't have it up.
Three was a rock drive. Four is a concrete approach off the back door.
What is anybody else's opinion on?
I think whoever leases it can bring rock in as far as that goes, but I'd like to have that concrete approach off the back door just to keep the concrete out of the, or the gravel out of the building.
So we're talking, looking at three items rather than just two?
That would be my preference, but ultimately, you guys are the ones voting on it, so it's up to you.
That's $1,400, another additional 14.
And what's co, what's our current, what are we currently at? Do we even?
Currently, it's two, yeah, I'm at 50. Sorry, I pulled up the original contract. Two, 265, 912 was the agreed-upon price.
And the grant was for?
Hundred and forty-four. Hundred and forty-four.
So if we add items, one, two, and, where was it, four, that brings the change order to $15,150.
Yeah, so the total or the changed price, if you will, would be $281,062, if I did my math right.
Have we had anyone interested? I'm, you can go ahead. I'm just asking.
I'm not sure. Ethan, have, have we had any calls yet? We probably won't get much until it starts going up.
Right.
I mean, we did, but that, that person's already found an alternative thing. I mean, that's one of the big reasons why the city engaged in this process is one of the, the EDC actually engaged in a, in a pretty comprehensive, you know, opportunities report for economic development and one of Harvey County's deficiencies, if you will, is there's not actually industrial buildings already built and that's a big push as a lot of places wanna go into existing structures, so.
Prior, prior to you coming on the council, Ethan and I did talk with two prospective clients that were interested in buildings in our industrial park and they didn't wanna own them. They just wanna lease them and I think it must be a big tax advantage for businesses to do that. But with us not having anything available and being at least a year out, they went somewhere else. So we're, we're really hopeful that we get this built with the help of this grant and get it occupied. And if that happens, there's enough room south of it and this is to the west side of Industrial Road where we could actually do another one. So, we're hoping this goes well and maybe we can look at that down the road, so.
Charlie, how you feel about those three items that we're talking about?
It's gonna be cheaper to do it now and will be later.
Yes, sir.
For sure. And like Josh says, you know, you know.
So, I'm about to make a motion here, so I just wanna make sure we're all good with one, two, and four, which brings us to a change order of $15,150. With that, Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I would make an emotion to approve a change order to the spec building for an additional $15,150.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve this change order for the industrial park spec building. All in favor say aye.
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 Post same sign. Alright, you can get to work on that one, Ethan.
Yep.
Next item on the agenda is the May 27, 2024 council meeting reschedule. I believe that's, uh, Memorial Day. So are you just wanting to move it to the Tuesday after that?
Um, that's normally what we've done, but- That's normally what we've done, but we did suggest, you know, we can do it Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever. Whatever will work where a quorum of you can show up.
What say you, counsel? When do you want?
Tuesday.
Usually Wednesdays probably, there's not as many kids' activities on Wednesdays. I don't know.
School will be done.
Oh, school will be done, yeah. So either one, I don't care.
Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm out of school all, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
You're retired, Jim. We know you're.
I'm teaching though. I have to work around a teaching thing, so Tuesdays are better for me at that point.
I'm good Tuesday.
Everybody good with Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
We need a motion to set that, Ethan.
Yes, please.
Is that the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I may make a motion to change the May twenty-seventh scheduled council meeting to May twenty-eighth.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to change the May twenty-seventh council meeting to May twenty-eighth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We'll see you then, counsel. Next item on the agenda that was added is discussion of softball lights and I believe Mr. Grant Williams is here to address the council on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna hand out something real quick.
All right, in front of you is a bid for the replacement of the light fixtures at the, what we call the little diamond, for lack of a better word. Our existing lights are aging as they were installed from what we can tell in the nineteen seventies. And they have been the ones as far back as I can remember and I'm almost that old, so they've been there a while. Each spring, this continues to be a concern, especially in the first few weeks of the high school softball season before the daylight hours get longer and the field needs to be lighted for the latest innings of the second game especially. This also comes into play for our rec teams in the summer. These better lights would would allow us to play later into the dark hours if necessary as the game schedule on that diamond is very, very crowded during our rec season. It does free up us to schedule a later start time for some of the older groups as well, freeing up diamond space. Additionally, it could come into play during old settlers, should that area be used either for softball or for some other old settlers event, depending on the demand for for softball space during that weekend. Recently, the existing lights, and I say recently, this is, we've been in a holding pattern for quite, quite some time on these. The existing lights have become extremely susceptible to wind bulb damage due to the light crossbars aging and moving as they do on blustery days. It's always an unknown to me how our existing lights will react, excuse me, in short of testing them every day the wind blows. They are a constant source of worry for me down there, as well as a continuous expenses as bulbs go out, getting a truck and an electrician out. Not the cheapest thing in the world and we've had them out twice already this spring. I believe the funding for this project could be taken from the additional sales tax. Ethan, correct me if I'm wrong. The additional sales tax fund that is ear-tagged for improvement of quality of life and amenities. And if that is the case, the funding is already there to be spent on a project like this. This quote, as you will note, is only replacing, if you look at it, only replacing the fixtures themselves, the crossarms that hold them and two of the existing poles that the guys came out and looked at it thought probably ought to be replaced. There's some splitting that is occurring with their age. These new lights are shown on page two, I believe, of, if I stapled them in the right order, page two. Make the jump to LEDs, which obviously will save power costs over the life of the of the product. The lights currently on the poles are the old flood-type light fixtures that just kind of spray light to wherever they may be, wherever they may see fit. The new fixtures would be a more directed light, meaning we can get light to the areas that we want it to be instead of just the general area. Basic map of that lighting is also included in the paperwork that I handed out to you. The bid you have in front of you is from Pryor Electric in Newton. They are a local electric firm. They are intimately familiar with our lights as they are who I call in a panic when our lights go out or as was the case earlier this spring, an entire pole that went out due to a wind event. Brandon and Josh are the two primaries I talked to there, have been here many times over the years for us in this capacity. They are who I went to to get this idea of what we might need in order for this fix. I realize that the diamond area may have the ability to change in the near or nearly near future with the bond issue and everything going on, but these fixtures would be able to be used in many different applications should that become a case. If we decide to change the layout, they can either be added to or used in another capacity. So I think in getting a a fix to the current situation and and giving a nod to the ever-changing future situation down there, I think this is a good fix for us, especially for the near future and hopefully beyond if that if that becomes the case. So your consideration is appreciated. I will answer any questions I can, but I am no electrician.
I would like to see, sorry, I'd like to see at least two more estimates.
Okay.
And and maybe some more itemized. So, yeah, there's two wood poles. What if we want to replace all six? You know, I'd like to know what that's, what would what.
How many total fixtures are part of this project?
Twenty-seven, I believe, was the count on that. And Josh, I understand what you're saying. I'm simply bringing this forward to you to to let you know this is what we're, this is what we're facing. I know Charlie's been to games down there before as a, in an official capacity. Just to let you know that if 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 you want the smaller fix before we jump into a bigger project, this is kind of the way, this is kind of the way we need to head and I I understand what you're saying and I'd be happy to do that. This, I I know, if you, well, if if projecting forward, if ball diamonds happen in other places in town and we have the opportunity to change our layout, then obviously pole exchanging and pole moving and things like that would need to happen at that time. So that's, that's, does that make sense? That's, that's what I mean by that.
Yeah, so it makes it even more important to get more estimates, I think.
Okay.
That was the only issue I had. Thank you.
Well, the estimate, quite frankly, with the work to be done, looks pretty fair to me, but how do we know if we don't have anything to compare it to?
Yeah, what what scope? What scope then would you prefer I I go with? Do you want the whole? All poles, all fixtures, all wires, all everything, or do you want?
That's why you asked for a request for a proposal.
Is that?
Instead of a bid.
Okay. But for the entire system.
I want to make sure that your your bids are apples for apples.
Apples and apples, right.
Yeah.
Right.
So you might put together a bid scope and say, this is what we're looking at doing. We're gonna add this many fixtures and these crossarms and two new poles.
There might be this X amount of linear footage of wiring, you know, whatever you may have to throw in there so that everybody's bidding the same apples for apples.
So just, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what you're after. You would like to see this, just with the two poles, the canisters change out and what this includes?
Yeah.
Or not, or the bigger, the bigger project. I guess that's.
Well, I mean, if another company comes out and they say, well, actually you have four poles that need to be replaced.
Right.
Because they inspected it differently.
Sure.
I don't know. I mean.
Yeah, the the end of the day, though, we need a clear scope where everybody's quoting the same thing, but I agree with Josh. I mean, they might come and look and determine there's another pole or two that we should be replacing.
Yeah, at least we have an itemized list. Well, gosh, we need another pole. That pole is four hundred and thirty dollars. We have at least no per pole.
Well, I'm fine with with asking him to do that, then I think, and this could be another discussion, we need to maybe set a precedent so people know if you're gonna ask for certain things, these are the expectations that need to be brought to us. So whether it's a truck that we're buying or whatever that we're replacing or, you know, I mean, I don't know. I just.
That is typical when there's.
The expectations are there already. They're in black and white.
I guess my question was what scope you're comfortable with with going. You know what I mean? I I I'm not sure how comfortable we are spending.
I would like to see it if we're gonna do this, because I was in with you when you talked about the original, moving the things around. I'd like to see it, so if we're gonna do something to better this, I'd like to see it be able to be moved and make sure that that whole thing is, you know, if we're gonna move the thing around.
Right.
That we, whatever we end up with.
Right.
To fix the current issue.
Sure.
But I appreciate you being proactive with this now because it is an issue now. I mean, that's because nothing has really been done for however many years and so.
The existing is a thing of the past.
And it just feels like, I know that 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 has been like, well, you know, it's not a, it doesn't feel like it's a huge priority because people just deal with it, but it's one more thing that people come into our community and it looks bad.
Can I ask this question? Do you want to to table, for lack of a better word? The the scope of this until we may or may not know on a bond issue answer, because I think that would affect the way I approach it, or you want me to go ahead?
I'm I'm okay with you taking the scope here that you've developed for
Okay.
for here and getting two other competitive bids to see where they're at.
Okay.
My my whole feelings on this one is switching over to the LED technology. The sooner we do that, the sooner we're gonna start seeing a payback on it. Because I'll guarantee if you look at how much current those old lights draw, we're spending a lot of money over there.
On the replacements and the service calls and all the other things that just start.
We probably could have paid for this project in the savings if we'd have done it two years ago. It'd already be paid for probably. Do we have individual meters over there where we could know what the electricity use is over there?
I don't think the lights are individually metered.
It'd be very interesting to know because with the.
I think so. I'll check that out, Mr. Mayor.
So when the bond fails, the, I'm just thinking, like, to plan ahead here, when the bond fails and then we're waiting another six months for a second vote, what's our plan, you know?
That's what I'm asking too, is yeah, how do you want me to proceed?
I think we go ahead and move forward with this scope because
I mean, you're gonna need lights, yeah.
Regardless of what the bond issue is.
I think we're gonna, yeah, I think we're gonna use it regardless.
We'll use it for a while before we make any changes to that field.
So if we put two new poles, can we relocate them later?
Sure.
Are there, is there equipment that can be taken down and then put back up?
The lights, yeah, everything can be, everything can be moved if you, you know what you're doing, I guess. But that's fine. I will, I will, that at least clears up what you want to see, so. There are, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Anybody else? Seven? Right, well, it's on your map. Yeah, right there. Thank you. Yeah, seven of them. And one of them has been replaced fairly recently in the last ten years because of a windstorm collapse.
There's basically four lights on each pole there, is what you said.
Basically, yes. Outfield and infield vary by one light.
Gonna reroute the wire, get it off the end?
Well, that was not included on this, but yes, that was the, that that would be part of it if we if we expand the scope some way. We have a wire that runs right over home plate.
Changing the lights, change how many you need?
I, it does not. The 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 plan, the lighting plan, if you look at it there, what this does is it down, I'm trying to sound like I don't know what I'm talking about and I don't on electric things. The current ones are, Pat, help me out, what are they, fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred watt.
Fifteen hundred watt lights, but like I say, they spray, they're just flood lamps, so they floodlight everywhere. What this allows you to do, at least that's what they were talking with me about the other day, was you 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 can limit that down so you're not wasting, I mean, when you, when you cut down the area, you're lighting by not having it spray light pollution into the sky. You can direct the light down a little more, so it takes less wattage or whatever the proper.
Would you be able to use fewer poles?
I don't think so. There's a, there's a limit to what those will do. That outfield is bigger than than you kind of think it is when you get out to the corners of it. It's still a fairly sizable outfield. You don't think about it when the high school's playing there, when little kids are playing there, because so much of it goes unused due to the short fence for high school softball and the no need for a fence for for little kids.
Most of these contractors, when they bid a project like this, they go to their wholesaler and their wholesaler will have a computer program where they can put in which fixture they're using and what the distances are and that's gonna tell them how many lumens they need or how many fixtures they're gonna need to get a certain level of light. And I'm quite sure on a project like this, somebody's probably already looked at that.
So we should get good competition then?
Yeah.
Okay, that tells me exactly what I need to know, so thank you. I just wanted to bring it up and let you know what was
Yeah, thank you, Grant.
what was coming your way, so perfect. Thank you.
All right, that does conclude the new business section of our agenda. We do have an executive session on the agenda this evening and I would entertain the motion for that now. And Jim, that's what you get for sitting in Brody's chair.
You get to do that.
Do I read this part two?
Yep.
Okay. Just clarifying my duties here. Mr. Mayor, counsel, I move that Halsted City Council recesses into executive session to discuss ongoing contract negotiations. Consultation with the attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged to Kearney client privileged. Sam, do I need to read the KS? Yep, KS, A seven five dash four three one nine B two.
One down.
Okay.
And ask that in addition to the governing body, et cetera.
And ask that the additional governing body, the following persons, join the governing body in executive session. City manager, city attorney. And the with the meeting thirty minutes? To resume at eight thirty. To resume at eight thirty. I'll get it right to next time.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We will move to executive session in the other room, counsel.
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Hearing nothing from the council, we'll move on in the next section on our agenda is the report section. And governing body comments are our first part of that, and Julie has found me a couple proclamations. Of course, these are both I'm very familiar with, so we'll do those proclamations now. The first one is an Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas Halsted has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. And now therefore I, Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Halsted, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2024 as Arbor Day in the City of Halsted. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our community's forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Staying true to my proclamation, if you'll notice, I planted a new blazing maple in my front yard this year, so I can puff up a little bit on that. Our next proclamation is a Public Service Recognition Week. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants, that's all you guys hear tonight, at the federal, state, county, and city levels, and these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. Whereas public employees take not only jobs but oaths. Whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, border patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants include teachers, doctors, and scientists, train conductors and astronauts, nurses and safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, and social workers, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Whereas the City of Halsted wishes to recognize our dedicated local government staff who provide invaluable service and support to Halsted residents. Now therefore I, Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Halsted, Kansas, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set seal here unto that May 5 through 11, 2024 is Public Service Recognition Week and encourage all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. Sign this 22nd day of April, 2024. All right, on that note, I think I'll go fishing that week. So now we're on to the rest of governing body comments. I'll start tonight with you, Shawna.
I think tonight.
Josh. George.
Glad to have you joining us with your wisdom.
Talking to me or Jim? Charlie.
Yes, sir. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you.
George and I attended the Kansas League of Municipalities Conference in Manhattan. I think we attended each and every session that there was. The food was very good, just too much of it. Got to meet a lot of interesting people who serve as mayors in very small towns and some unincorporated towns, and even Lilly Wu from Wichita. Yeah, so it's one of those things. But it's a very positive experience. For me it was, anyway, as a newcomer. I'm looking forward to the October meetings in Wichita. And if you get an opportunity to go, I'm grateful to the city and specifically for Julie's work in getting me to the right place at the right time and getting things taken care of. She's a she'd make a good agent for the airlines.
Don't try to find her another job. We need her where she's at.
So when an opportunity comes up again, take it. It's worth your time, and I really appreciate the opportunity to go.
Well, thanks, Charlie. I'm glad you got to enjoy that. Jim, what would you say on your first meeting as a council member?
I'd like to say it's an honor to be on the council, and I look forward to serving the city that I love and my adopted home, so look forward to it. Thank you all.
Well, it's great to have you here. On another note, I will say this, I've spent quite a bit of time out in the yard this past week, and the garter snakes seem to be out in abundance. My wife is definitely afraid of them, and I think I have picked up about seven or eight so far, and put them in a five-gallon bucket. And if anybody's interested, I'm dumping them over by the bridge at the river north of Martin Machine and Welding, so if you want a garter snake, you can probably go find one there. Other than that, I'll move on to Ethan for his city manager report, and Ethan, go ahead and roll into your first quarter financial after that.
Thank you. Work continues on several city projects since our last meeting, including the industrial park speculative building, Safe Routes to School project, and the website update with Aptogee, and then the wayfinding signs. We also met with INA Alert to discuss the security camera system at Public Works, and then the potential for one at the golf course. We continue to work on the RFP for the plan comprehensive update, comprehensive plan update. We continue working with both Concurrent and the Planning Commission on potential zoning code changes related to the battery energy storage system. And then we're currently also reviewing the draft audit report, which should hopefully be presented next meeting. Staff also will be engaged in monthly reporting for the multiple grants we currently have in process, submitting the city's annual update regarding ARPA funds and their use. And then work is beginning with departments on their budget requests for the upcoming 2025 fiscal year. Just wanted to also let you all know that I will be out of the office at the KCCM conference hosted by KU and their Public Management Center, which is in Lawrence, and that will be Wednesday afternoon through Friday. So that is all I have as far as the manager's report. And for our first quarter financial, you have the handouts there that Julie provided with the treasures reports. At the end of the first quarter of 2024, we find ourselves in slightly favorable condition regarding cash balances across all funds compared to the first quarter in 2023. City's general fund and water fund are in the best comparative positions, while the gas fund shows a significant planned drawdown reflecting the accelerated payments towards the 2021 winter storm gas utility loan from the state of Kansas. Just a reminder, those accelerated payments are estimated to save our utility customers approximately $90,000 in interest costs and has the city on track to pay off the loan in just about three years, which is four years earlier than scheduled. Most of our other budgeted funds of the city ended their first quarter in about the same position as they did last year, just reflecting overall stability and continued financial due diligence from departments. Across all funds, including our budgeted and non-budgeted, the city saw an increase just shy of $450,000 with revenues and capital transfers in outpacing expenditures and capital expenditures for equipment or projects. The city saw approximately $2.7 million in revenues and transfers while only expending $2.28 million during the first quarter. Revenues continue trends we observed during 2023, including strong sales tax collections and interest income in addition to the normal beginning-of-year property tax revenues that come in from Harvey County. We've received favorable delinquent property tax payments and then favorable city property contract payments. Expenditures overall remain consistent with our budget projections for the first quarter with some notable increases in things such as property and liability insurance, annual premiums, unanticipated rail spur repairs, and then increased community donations and support. City's utility funds overall remain in a stable shape for the first quarter. Most of the funds having revenues higher than or equal to their expenditures and reserve transfers for the quarter. Waste water and gas were the only two utility funds that saw expenditures unfavorable to their revenues. For the gas fund, this is due to the accelerated loan payments as previously mentioned. And then for the wastewater fund, emergency repairs to the lift stations and utility costs are the main drivers of their higher-than-anticipated expenditures. But again, not significantly out of the norm or things that are giving us great heartburn at the moment. For capital and reserve funds, the city transferred just over $300,000 across those funds and then expended just over $120,000, with the main purchase being the small dump bed and snowplow purchase for Public Works. All capital funds ended their first quarter with higher balances, with the exception of the city equipment fund, which saw a drop of about $20,000 during the first quarter, again reflecting that Public Works equipment purchase. We do anticipate seeing declines this year in our capital expenditure funds as we hopefully begin to see the dirt turn on several grant-funded projects such as the industrial spec building and the Safe Routes to School improvements, and as we've been holding a lot of funds in anticipation of our matches for those grants. At the end of the first quarter, the city had just over $6.7 million in cash and investments across all funds, and then total long-term liability and obligations in the forms of bonds and loans, just shy of $5.7 million. It's a good start for us for the first quarter of the fiscal year and puts us on very solid ground as we will continue into the second quarter, so I will gladly answer any questions.
The only question I have, so we did end up receiving a bill for that derailment?
Yeah.
Nice.
Not from BNSF, just what we had to pay our contractor to repair it, so.
Was that our, I mean, because it's in technically part of the city, that's why that?
Yeah, the city owns the rail spur from, oh, Pat, how, like, just basically west of Halsted Road, almost all the way to Mill Creek. We own that entire length, the spur.
Well, council, any other questions? If not, that concludes our business this evening, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Did you have something to say? I'll motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, council.